I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if Lyle will be here or not.
No.
He won't be here either.
He called me.
I know that Dave is out of town, so we've got two people missing. On the agenda, first item is to approve the agenda. There is a change at the bottom of that first page. Instead of the Fall River Housing and Development Commission, that should say Hot Springs Housing and Development Commission. And on the back, we will not be going into legal and executive session. We're not ready to do that yet at this point. So with those changes, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Motion second, discussion of questions about the agenda.
Yeah, I guess on your decision on this not to go into executive session, I'm a little confused.
We can talk about this, but Carol doesn't have everything ready.
We are still going to run it for personnel.
Oh, yeah, we'll move on for personnel.
Alright, okay.
Just not for legal.
Okay.
Any discussion of questions? Got a motion of second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. And the minutes of the April 21st meeting, you have a motion to approve that?
We'll move second.
A motion of second, discussion of questions on the minutes. If not, I've got a motion of second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. And the claims, bills in between are total of $169.7709. You have a motion to approve them.
Aye.
A motion and a second, discussion of questions on the bills in between. Got a motion of second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. And the current claims, I have a motion to approve them and the amount of $95,053.10.
I'll move.
Got a motion and a second, discussion of questions.
I got a few questions.
Okay.
Airport, this is for Mr. Lux. Airport, they buy cups, forks, and plates and stuff for what? They don't serve food out there.
Did you call in on that today?
I did not, I didn't have time. Do you know why?
No.
We're not gonna make a steady habit of that, are we? I don't think tax payers need to... Even if they do on the campus, they get themselves... I mean, you guys at the city all have cake or something, you get your own. I just don't think the tax payers need to supply the airport with that. I know it don't amount to much, but...
It says it's a reimbursement. They borrow it from somebody?
No, Ed went and bought it and we reimbursed it.
Oh.
I thought they had coffee and stuff for people that came from flying.
They got coffee, but that's it.
They have to have cups.
Why don't you find out for him?
Another problem I think we have is they're using a little dump truck for hauling gravel from Pete Lane. And the mayor said it was the golf course he was told. Why didn't we turn somebody loose and take the side dump out and make it half the load? It would've been cheaper for the city, you know, quite a bit cheaper. Can we find out about that next time? That's what we bought the side dump for, is to use stuff like that.
Is that on here?
Yeah.
Which one?
I don't know, I don't look at this, I look at the bill, so I don't look at it. Number three, paid $640.73 for electrical at Evans Plunge because somebody ordered the wrong oven?
Emily, she said the one's the wrong one.
Pizza oven.
Yes.
Ovens? Emily said it wasn't the wrong one.
Well, I guess we'll just have to ask our electrician then.
Electrician says it had to be wired because it's the wrong one.
Yeah, I know it tooks two pizzas now instead of one, probably the wiring wasn't heavy enough, but I don't hold the answer. Emily doesn't... didn't understand electricity.
What, then she can't ask? That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions about the current claims?
I don't know for sure.
Got a motion of second to approve the current claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
Abstained.
And communication from the public, Steve, get up first.
Status of the airport, please.
The one with Pete Lane or the one with...
Wayne advertised in the paper that...
Oh, on the planning, what's the latest on that, Craig, for the public safety? Has anything happened?
Nothing yet. I know that the... We sprayed the inside and we bought seating stuff for the inside wildlife fence. And they bought the seat before they found out we can't seat it until fall. So we got all that seed laying around out there. Outside the fence, I have... That's... I left that to Tracy and he's gonna... Try to get somebody to plant it for us again.
So is that seed and we can't plant? We gotta plant something.
No, that's for inside the fence. We have... they bought seats for inside the fence.
I think we spread sludge inside the fence.
No, we don't.
We didn't, okay.
I guess, Don, what I'm asking is, you advertised for bids. Okay, how many bids were there?
There was nothing received on time, but we got yours, what, at 1:00 or something that day.
Okay, so then you're rejecting it because it wasn't in on time?
We didn't reject anything because we didn't have any. So basically, you could say yes, we didn't have any bids at the bid opening time. In fact, your envelope, I don't think Harley ever even...
How could we give you a bid when no one will take it?
I'm sorry, what?
How could we give the city a bid if no one will take my bid?
Yeah, I'd be there on the island, don't you?
Yes, you're right, and I was there before. Harley, I was there before 10 o'clock, I asked you to take the bid, you said no, take it to the airport.
Lord, I... you asked if we had any bid specs, and I said, no, we have no bid specs for what we were doing. We needed to see Ed for any specifics. My understanding is you went out and talked to the airport, whether it was Ed or Wayne, I don't know which one, and they changed some things on you, or you weren't aware of some things, so you went home to change the bid and bring it back in later.
That was that earlier, that was way earlier. Then I brought the bid in and you said you had nothing to do it, the airport had it totally...
The actual bid did not come in until 12, when it was redid or rebated.
That's right. I was gonna drop it off and you said to take it to the airport.
I don't believe that's exactly what I said, but I said that you asked if there were any specifications, and I said, I showed you what sheet that the airport guys had put together.
Anyway, I took it out to the airport and then said, no, you have to take it to the city.
And that was at 1:00. Sometime between 12 and 1:00 is what, what the airport guy told me.
When he got the bid?
Yes.
But 20th of hand, I was giving it to Ed and he wouldn't take it, he said I had to take it to the city. We're just gonna have to give Ed here. But anyway, so be it, I couldn't leave my bid prior to 10 o'clock because nobody would take it.
You actually didn't have a bid for me when you walked in that morning?
I had it in my pocket, yeah. Not there, not early in the morning.
At 8:30 when you came in, you did not have a bid, or 8:30, quarter to 9:00, whenever we talked. We did not... you did not have a bid. You said, what are the specs? And I said, well, it's whatever the guys at the airport want put together, which they didn't put anything together. And you went out and visited with them, and what I was told from the airport manager was that after you talked, there were some changes, so you took the bid back and had it retyped and brought back up.
Now you just said I didn't have a bid, now you said I took the bid back.
Well, when you were talking to Ed, I did not see...
I had the bid, I had the bid. I think it don't make any difference, I will leave it anyway. But the fact is, you advertised for bids, I go to the city, they don't wanna take it, I take it to the airport, they don't wanna take it. So how is the bid supposed to be taken?
Why wouldn't you just leave it at city hall? It said clearly on their bids to be received at city halls, why wouldn't you just left it there?
Because Harley, you said that the city had nothing to do, the airport had total control of it.
I said the airport had control, total control of the bid, yes.
That's right, I took it then, from there, I took it out to the airport, and Ed wouldn't take it, so nobody would take my bid.
We open all bids at city halls, why would you say that?
He was asking me questions about the bid specs. I told him you had to go to the airport to get the bid specs, that's how I understood the conversation.
Wait, you also said the bid had to go out there?
I don't know if I said that, because I don't think I've ever turned down a bid. And I did not see you have a bid when we were talking in the morning.
I had, but he wouldn't take it, so, and neither would I, that was the fact, I couldn't give it to anybody.
You did not say, here's a bid, or when we talked in the morning, you did not say, I've got a bid for the airport, here it is. You did not say that to me at all. I didn't know you had a final bid, ready to hand bid when we visited, but that's a misunderstanding going here.
Out there where you guys put the sewer extension in for McDonald's, you put erosion control down there just recently. Okay, now, all of the dirt, this is months and months, almost one year later.
Year, almost, yeah.
Nothing but rock there, but you put the control mat over the top of the rock. And how is anything supposed to grow there? There was nothing but rocks there. Should've been put topsoil back on there before you put the control mat on. And then see underneath it.
Kinda have to agree with you on that one.
And then from down there, from the... where you guys went from the fountain down, it's all rocks too. And I don't know how many of that...
Yeah, that's where I thought the blanket was gonna go.
It went on that slope up there when you put...
We put a little heat public work, hey, why is that map been laying out there all winter? And you get this done and that's the result.
Well, anyway, the rock should've been taken out and the topsoil put down, seeded, and then the control, erosion control. That's the norm of this stuff. It's not gonna do any good. You know, I mean, you put that down to keep the rocks from washing, I guess I didn't understand why they put it down after it's so...
We will have to look at that, Steve, because I didn't... I haven't looked at it myself, but what I will do is find out and talk with Tracy tomorrow or the next day, see if I can catch up to her. Because we should do it right there.
I normally know that, and there's just an enormous... Okay, water pressure. In town. What is a normal... what's your working water pressure?
Very...
Right, from left to right?
It's as high as 140 or... The top of the hill runs anywhere from 80 to 100, somewhere around there. I haven't checked everywhere, I don't know exactly.
What's normal working? I mean, is 120 a normal pressure?
60 pounds will easily handle the home.
So then, why do we have 120?
Because of our terrain mainly, and the lack of pressure reducing stations that we've been talking about getting some in, and they're definitely on... we priced pre-built ones, which are really expensive.
So we don't have working...
We have one, one at the golf course and one at the end of 24th, I believe it is, towards the state home.
25th.
Point fifth?
Actually, that's a 35th.
And 10th.
We've got one up there across from West and Lake.
Some of us, I mean, that's... It's a situation well aware of. I mean, there's talk of putting in a pressure reducing station at the bottom of Boardwalk Hill.
So if water... If water pressure is high and it explodes pipes, who's responsible?
If it's city may, it'd be the city.
What if it's in a household?
The insurance company's gonna tell you that since you're aware of the fact that you have high water pressure, it's up to you to put in a pressure reducer, and they're not gonna pay you for it. That's just what the insurance...
But is the city supposed to control it to some extent, to a working pressure? I mean, I guess when somebody comes to town and they buy a house, do you guys let them know that we have these huge spikes and it could explode up there?
You want us to go to the realtors and let people know that...
How does the town or public know that you guys are not madding or working your reducing station? Now, I've talked to Tracy, and I asked him if the pressure reducing station we have is working. He says, I don't know, I don't think so.
Okay. We have three of them, right now, all three of them are working. If we didn't, if they weren't working, you'd know it down here in the hotel, because you'd have about 400 pounds of pressure down there. So they are working.
Well, the fire suppression company that we have, and we've had them for 10 years, we have a recording system on their fire, and it records all the high pressures. From day one, our water pressures, and this is an annual thing, go as high as 150 to 170 pounds.
And I agree. At times it will.
That's terrible, they say...
The reason it will is because one of the pressure reducing valve stations that we're in the process of having rebuilt, we've had to rebuild it probably, I don't know how many times, Ray. Four times that I know of since I've been here in the last eight years. And it's... we're in the process of doing something totally different up there now, replacing it. But when that goes out, that's basically what it does, it opens up and then my pressure at my house, I live up by Butler Park, and my pressure runs at 85 volts a time, and it'll get up around 100 when that goes out. But it's something that doesn't last for days and days. It's usually as soon as we figure it out, as soon as we have noticed that that's happening, we go up and we can take that offline, and then we basically have to regulate the pressure by hand. So that's... I agree with you, you do get times when you're gonna get 150. And we're... hopefully, we'll eliminate that when we get that new pressure reducing station up there. The one that's up there now has been there since day one. And we rebuilt it, rebuilt it, we can't even get parts for it, so we're in the process of putting in a new one.
I was talking to an engineer, and he said, you know you have problems like that, high spikes in the city, and you have a pressure reducing station. And when the pressure reducing station's not working, therefore, you give everybody high pressure. They say that to eliminate that, you need a double pressure reducing station. So if one fails, the other one picks it up. That's no different than in my hotel, because of these spikes, I had to put in one, a reducer, a larger. Well, to protect myself, because a reducer will fail, my plumber had to put two in a row, so that way, if one fails, the other one picks it up. So I'm just wondering why Hot Springs, knowing they have this problem that could pressure up to 400 pounds, you know, I mean, why are we not addressing this with...
We are.
Okay, I've been... Fire system, they've been recording this for 10 years, 150 to 170 pounds on high peaks. So 10 years, we're still looking at the same problem and we're addressing it?
Part of the problem we have is when you've got a town like Hot Springs, if we would put pressure reducers in to keep the pressure, let's say, 80 pounds in this lower part of town, as soon as you try to push the water up the other side of those people, you can't bring it up there if you've reduced it too far. So you can't reduce it all the way to 80 down in the valley and still take water to the top of the hills. And then the other thing we've done is we've been looping our water in a lot of places, so the water doesn't just go through one pressure reducer valve and hit that whole section of town. There's a bunch of mains that it goes through, we'd have, I don't know how many pressure reducers we'd have, we could have 40 or 50 or 60 different stations by the time we got done if we reduced everything, but then we'd have to have boosters at the bottom to take it back up to the Singapore subdivision, for example. We don't have a way to get it up there if we reduce it too far. We got hills and we got problems because...
Right, but I mean, it makes it real difficult. Residents, you know, if a pipe bursts because of high pressure, their insurance won't cover it.
Right.
Okay, neither will the city, so, you know, the individuals hung out to dry if a pipe burst, like your house.
Now, there's... There's a lot of pressure reducing valves in town in some of these lower areas. We don't know what else we could do about it.
Because of the knowledge of knowing that we have such fluctuation in pressure within the city, each time I reget a house, I put in a pressure reducing valve in. I didn't redundant, put in two, because I didn't think I needed it. But I did put pressure reducing valves in each one of the houses that I reget, because of the knowledge that that pressure was there and it could spike.
On residential, I've been told that if spike is high enough, it bypasses the reducer.
Well, I've never had one.
I haven't heard that, I could use it.
It's extremely... I heard those facts. So if we would get the reducer station that you have, it completely fails and it increases so high, it's literal. But the point is, is people are not insured that the city has high water pressure, their pipes burst, and the city won't cover it. So, no, I mean, they're at risk.
How much are the reducer valves?
I'm sorry?
How much are the reducer valves?
The hotel's 700.
Depending on your pipe size, for a normal house, 125, 150 bucks plus installation.
But they don't last very long?
They... Hot Springs water is prone to...
You should have replaced it every four years.
Crowed.
How long is it in the water?
And I'm a little frustrated at the speed at which this is getting done, Steve. We've talked about this numerous times in public work, hey, we need to... You know, and part of the problem is we had this big water study done in '05, and there's nothing in that study at all addressed our pressure problems here in Hot Springs, and where the best areas would be to locate these stations. All these engineers and all this work, and there's nothing in there. So I don't know. Tracy's got his idea where some should go. Maybe we need an actual hydrology engineer here to look at that, I don't know.
I just think that if you can't address it, now, let's say you can't correct this. I really think the city should let the public know that, that they should be able to put pressure reducers in and that the city's insurance is gonna cover it, so the people will put these in.
I think at one time, the city actually supplied the pressure reducing valves at one time. Done right, Ray?
You're right. And as a water serviceman, well, when I worked here, or still do, you know, the water service men, they let the public know where the high pressures are and why they need a pressure reducer. This problem existed forever and it's still gonna exist until, like Don was saying, we reduce the pressure for everybody down in the valley, but if we worry about the other residents up on the other side of the valley, then we're gonna have an expensive problem putting in booster stations to boost that water back up. So, having said that, I think this issue that Mr. Sherman is talking about, you know, it ain't gonna go away, and it ain't gonna be an easy problem. But I think things are on an even keel and everybody's aware of it, and everybody does their best with what they can do. Everybody puts in pressure reducers, gets high, it blows off the pop-off valve on the water tank, replace the pressure reducer. That's the way it's been for the last 30 years, you know? And we've addressed these pressure reducing stations forever. And there are many, there's three main pressure reducing stations, but then you add all the smaller, like six more, probably six more smaller versions of pressure reducing stations that were working at one time, but because we couldn't synchronize all of these pressure reducing stations, they were popping off all over town, flooding. So there was a decision made was to cannibalize and open up these small pressure reducing stations and try to alleviate the problem that way. We can still put in pressure reducing stations, but then again, we have another problem with Don just talked about. We can reduce these pressure down to 60 PSI downtown, but everybody up on 3rd and 4th Street ain't gonna have any water. That's just the way it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There isn't an easy answer to that one, Steve, it just isn't.
Deal with 170 pounds, right?
No, it's us getting the word out to...
No, but I mean, I have to deal with spikes of 100, to say. Just as I would if I didn't put the pressure reducers into my houses.
So then, will the city cover the pressure reducers then?
That's an easy answer, no. We have never done that.
I thought you said you'd do that.
No, I didn't know they ever furnished them in the past.
I think they did at one time, though.
I didn't know.
It's been a few years back.
I didn't know it.
Did they actually put them in or did they...
We knew where the high areas were, were back point. And when they had problems, you know, and the city was pretty much sympathetic to the cause, and yes, we did, supplied backflow preventers, not to the size of Mr. Sherman's by no means, but we did provide 3/4 inch and 1 inch pressure reducers for these residents that were affected badly by the high pressure.
But we just supplied them, we didn't actually put them in?
No, we supplied them, I'm sure I supplied...
You used to supply a meter pit if you wanted it to. And they, the newer meter pits have the pressure reducing valves built in.
Right in, built right in.
Maybe we're on the look at pressure reducer valves. I don't know.
See how the water budget looks, and we talk about some more things.
Thanks, Steve. You done? Mary, you're next.
Yes, I would like to know how many in the city council believe that this is the veterans' town? How many of you would like to say that is the veterans' town?
Well, we all do, Mary.
Okay, how many of you in the audience believe this is the veterans' town? Well, last week, we had some bad news. Remember, it wasn't long ago when I came here and said that the advisory board had approved, and the mayor and Harley had approved that we let veterans, the homeless veterans from the DOM in for $2. Remember that? That was only a couple weeks ago, wasn't it? Well, the emails up there have been flying ever since. From what I understand, Mr. Dischasha was there on Monday, I believe, is what I heard. Tuesday, Emily gets two phone calls saying she cannot do this. Now, she told Emily, first of all, not the city, the VA told Emily that she cannot do this.
Why?
Last Tuesday, okay, she got two phone calls. The first time, first word they used was confidentiality. You'll read in the paper tomorrow, Bob has a letter about that, he was furious when he heard that. So he has a letter addressing that. Then, the next time, I believe, she called the manager and... No, I talked to another veteran who called up and talked to the lawyer. He said, oh, yeah, it isn't confidentiality, of course, they can't use that word because it doesn't apply, because years ago, they paid $3,000 a year, and then the city paid 3, and they had slips saying that they were from the DOM. If they didn't want, if it was confidentiality, they didn't have to, they could pay full price. And there are a few up there that probably can't. Okay, so, this veteran talked to the lawyer, and he's used these words, they could not endorse the renal card. That's what they said. The same veteran... The same veteran called the DOM chief and said, "Are you denying the meal card?" He wanted a word so that you could do something about it. The city, and I still don't understand how they can tell the city what to do. There has been no response as of today. The veteran called me about three this afternoon and said he has no reply. What he wanted to do, and I've written this out for you, he wants to work with the VA because he says many veterans in the program, especially the PTSD guys, do not talk to anyone when they get there, they're so dumb. And they, the word of mouth has gotten out about the two dollars, but that's the more vocal, friendlier veterans up there, and usually the ones that have been in the program a while. Some of the veterans still don't know about it. We wanted to put flyers up there, so he's trying to work with the VA so they can put flyers in the DOM saying, "You can get in for two dollars." But he wants to see what they can use instead of that meal card. Do you remember Bob that kind of talked about this? And he said that thing he could visualize was maybe they could hold the cards. When they didn't hold it, they just said, "Emily cannot accept it." I don't know how they can get Emily orders. So, I had called the mayor, and he was gonna call up there and, or let Emily do it and find, give it in writing, so we have something, you know, because first of all, confidentiality, now they don't endorse it. Anyhow, another veteran, Don Ackerman, could not be here tonight, he sent me this email. "We need a simple letter from the VA showing they are denying and why. Isn't it a city issue that they approved the interest? You, you, the city. We need proof and a name as to who's doing this and that will fix it." And so, I'm leaving it up to all of you to see if you can come up with any other solution. The first veteran said he was hoping that the VA would respond and come up with something other than the meal card. The meal card is something only the veterans in the DOM sell. So, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Well, I'll work on it. I haven't done anything yet, but I'll work on it.
You work on the part of getting a letter?
I'll work on the part of getting the veterans in for two dollars. There's gotta be a way to do it that makes sense.
I know, but...
I'll work on it. I haven't spent any time on it, but I was told once to call and then write a letter and then know, I have to have a letter in response, and I've had four or five different instructions, so I'm gonna do it my own way, I'm just gonna find out what the deal is and I'll handle it if it can be handled.
Okay, is it, I didn't know if people on here could have ideas for it? I was really insulted. Well, Kirk, you know, I was so angry when I came into the newspaper and told them, I thought this would get some press. I was so upset, I was rattled. How do they have a right to tell you guys what you can do for not doing it? Because Emily just stopped doing it because, you know, she didn't know what to do, she was threatened. She said she couldn't even deal with that.
I don't think they were trying to tell us what to do, they were trying to tell those guys they cannot use their meal card.
Well...
Those are government-issued cards, there's more information on that card than you realize, probably.
I don't know.
Well, that's it, you don't know, there's probably, there's more on that card than you know, so I mean, that's just it. Don's gonna figure out something else.
Well, that's it. If they can use their regular ID cards, I thought that would be all right, and then somebody said, "Well, what are other veterans using?" First of all, the veterans said, "Nobody else." Well, the people that aren't homeless, why would they? They can pay, just get the ten percent off or whatever. And the ones from the DOM could show and say, "I'm from the DOM," if they're willing to do that. If they're not, then they have to pay full price.
So, are all these people at the DOMs homeless?
No, not, they aren't all homeless, but many of them are, and the ones that are, they can't afford, there's a ninety-dollar three-month thing, which is the cheapest, then there's a forty-five dollar, and some aren't there, gonna be there for that length of time. So, okay, if you're gonna handle it, that's fine, I just thought maybe the council could come up with some ideas, because at this point, I don't know what to do anymore, I don't know where to go.
All right, if the council has ideas, let me know, otherwise, I'm gonna get hold of the VA and like, word it out, whatever, I think. Should be a way to do it.
It's for the veterans, it's for their benefit, you know, their dealing. Veterans keep telling me, one of them said, "If I have to pay full price, I'll do it." He said, "Because this place is wonderful for me." He said, "I'm swimming, I'm doing this, and when I get marching on the outskirts and exercise," and, I mean, they love that place. And it gets them out of the DOM and in with us, you know, very beneficial. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary. Any other communications from the public? Yeah, Kim?
I just wanted to update everybody on the carnival. We've got the tickets in, so I've got lots of locations locally here as well, Custer and Edgemont, that will help sell the tickets. So, we got a thousand tickets to sell. We're gonna go for fifteen a sheet. When the carnival does come into town, they will be selling them for twenty-four dollars a sheet. So, I would appreciate all the support from you guys as well, you know, passing the word and getting tickets out, because we did vote to back it up if we don't sell them all, so...
Okay.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
What's the date of the carnival again?
July twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-fifth, sixth, seventh.
So, you want us to support you, but we don't know where they're at to send people to them?
They're gonna be printed, no. It's, they're being printed, well, I'm hoping they're being printed as of today, but they'll be out by this week.
Yeah, but, I mean, you said they're gonna go to different places to sell, but you need to tell us where they're at?
They'll be on the posters, I'll leave my ideas right. Nelson's, One Gas, First Center State Bank, and Hot Springs, Custer, Edgemont. Nelson's will be here as well as Custer, Sturtevant's, Ace Hardware, Evans Plunge, oh, there's a few more. So, they'll be all on the posters.
Is this the same weekend as the whole discovery? Isn't that Bob's same time?
I don't even know that is.
I'm just wondering. I know they have stuff like that, they're...
They don't have, they don't have a carnival?
No, they have other things.
I know when I picked those dates, actually, well, that was the only time I could get that carnival here, there was nothing, no conflict, because I checked with Edgemont as well as Custer's. And that was put back in, what is it, October, November, when I started working on it.
It just sounds like the days of old.
Well, it's a done deal, so it don't matter.
Well, I'm just saying, if we are gonna be backing, you know, for fifteen thousand, we probably better really work hard on it, because if that's the state...
Well, that's, the city did, you guys already did approve the backing of it, so I'm just updating you, I'm letting you know the tickets are here, so they're gonna be out, I mean, for distribution here this weekend. So, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Were we on it at Centania? Or Murph, or where is it currently?
Down at Centania. American Agent selling tickets as well, I mean, they're settled.
Thank you, Kim. Any other communications from the public?
I have the shelves.
Okay, we'll continue. Under personnel, there's new people, old people, there's probably a few changes, you can read it for yourself. I might mention that Steve Preheim was our maintenance man at the plunge, and things just didn't work out the way we thought, it shifted on there, so he was in his year of probationary period, so he is, he is gone. Other appointments, next item, I'd like to appoint Kara Hagan for a term ending December thirty-first, 2014, and Bob Nelson for a term ending December thirty-first, fifteen, to the Historic Preservation Commission. The reason these terms look kinda short is because we're filling old positions, so at the end of 2014, most likely Kara will be put back on again for the next term, but anyway, that's the reason for these short terms. So, I'd like to appoint those two people.
And you both live here in town?
Pardon me?
They both live here in town?
Yeah, yes. To be on the Historic Preservation Commission, you have to live in the city limits. Not all of them do, but Historic Preservation do.
That's what I thought.
We have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Got a motion and a second? Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? And on the, what we've been doing for the last four to six months or so, to kinda help Debbie down in the city halls, we have been making all of the boards and commissions end on December thirty-first of the years, so instead of looking every month or two to refresh which ones are out, everything will come due, so in like September, October, November, we can spend some time looking at all of them. So, because of that, I'd like to extend the terms to the five people on the Hot Springs Housing Commission, and all for eight months, and that would make Terri Slagle end her term at the end of fourteen, Jim Stevens end fifteen, Linda Cobb the end of sixteen, Mike McNeil the end seventeen, and Mark Crossman the end eighteen. That way, we don't have to keep looking, and these all came up at the same time, but it just makes it easier for Debbie to look at all the boards and commissions one time, so I'd like a motion to approve the extensions of those terms to the eight months period.
We'll move. Second?
Motion and a second, discussion and questions on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? And, old business, the pigeon issue at two forty-three North River, there was a motion by the council to contact Robert Johnson about the pigeon issue, but the council did not say what kind of action they would like to see if the problem isn't taken care of. And we don't know if the council wants him to go through the animal control, the police department, if it isn't handled right, do we want to take the next step and start doing fines and correct it ourselves, because I don't, I was told that he was gonna have it fixed, I don't know if it's actually happened. But Scott last week was wondering, what is he supposed to do next? Should he follow other procedures that he has in place, or does the council want to do something different?
Didn't we set this for an abatement by Johnson?
All the, I think all the motion was is to let him know to correct the problem.
Okay, so what's the next procedure?
Normally, he would put in the letter of date that it has to be done by, and if it isn't done, he would abate the nuisance, he would take care of it, give him whatever methods he has to. And he doesn't know if he wants the council to have him continue as normal, because they made the motion to just contact him. And we did get a letter from Robert Johnson last, I think it was Thursday, maybe I should read this.
Eighteen twenty-eight.
Oh, you got that, oh, you got that too, okay. I didn't really have that, right? But Scott would like to have a question, do you want him to continue right now? He'd like to know if you, if you want him to follow normal steps or if there's something different.
I think he should follow the normal steps, that's basically what we're doing for.
The reason he's asking is because it was done by council actually, just to notify him.
Well, what did he think we wanted done, just to notify him or tell him he had a problem?
Well, he didn't know if you wanted him to just do more than notify him or not. It makes sense.
The next step would be for Scott to enter the building and abate the nuisance, and Johnson's letter says, "Don't you dare do that." Is what his name is on that.
You have a lawyer?
As the...
That is, I'm sorry, Carl.
I was just gonna ask if, if it went through the nuisance committee and was brought to the council, we would recommend that Scott proceed with his normal activities.
You want it to go to them, do you think? Are you ready to decide now?
We can get a warrant, too, I mean, he said...
Well, that's what Johnson was saying. The ordinance allows for it, he's claiming since he didn't get a copy of the ordinance, that we're not meeting, fulfilling our requirements of the ordinance, but it's just like, you get a speeding ticket or you run a stop sign, you don't have to have a copy of the ordinance to say that you violated an ordinance.
Does he correct in, is stating that the state law says that we have to provide copy of the ordinance?
I don't wanna answer that question. Do you know, part of it, I don't?
I don't know if state law actually does that, but procedure says that you need to provide the statute if you're, you know, upon request, you need to do that. He plays this game and has ever since I've been around and way before that, so...
The pigeon's not the only problem with that building, there's a big hole inside of that thing, the craters you can get in and out of.
We, you know, we talked about this two years ago, and Scott's, I tell you, he knows what we were trying to do.
Scott can't do anything more than what the council tells him to do to begin with, so if we tell him...
Yeah, he can, yes, he can, Carl.
Do you want me to tell Scott to proceed?
I don't know. Do you want your nuisance committee to look at it and make a recommendation, and then make a recommendation to Scott?
I think these guys are gonna play the game at the turn of the corner, and we...
Well, they've done that with that building.
We just go after them with whatever means are at our disposal.
Hey? That's what I think we should do.
With the white eyes, we need to proceed with whatever possible means we have, or we keep it legal. And if he does, if the, you know, they say that he has to have a copy of whatever violation it is, whatever his ordinance...
Yeah, give him a copy.
Send him one.
And then get a warrant if we need to.
Okay. Then you look on our website, the ordinance are up there, aren't they?
Not on the website.
Not on the website, yeah.
Andrew Albin doing a very good job on our building, every now and then we'll walk and they had a whole bunch of friends on both sides of it.
Yeah, they're, they're all there.
They need friends.
Yeah.
Okay.
They all need names because they're like pets.
We'll proceed. The water bid that was received, I think, two meetings ago, I think, on Albany Avenue, Schedule C, right?
Last meeting, I believe. It's my recommendation that we just leave this table until we find out how these contractors performed on the other two jobs.
You have to act on a bid within thirty days, you either need to accept or reject the bids within thirty days.
Okay, my motion is to reject the bid, we can rebid it, budget it more for next year, we got, we're spending a big chunk of the money in our water reserve right now, and this, and we also need a new valve exerciser, and we're looking at replacing a bunch of meters, and I just think it'd be wise policy to budget this as a first project for next year to be done.
I'll second that. And our guys might be able to get to it this summer, we don't know that.
And we don't know nothing about this contractor that was awarded the other two bids.
Okay, I'm got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second to reject the bid on Schedule C? Any more discussion or questions? Got a motion and a second to reject the bid, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? New water business, purchase of spin doctor, is that yours also?
Public Works, yes. We're not doing a very good job exercising these valves. Spin doc, the first spin doctor we bought was a prototype, and we've had nothing but problems, 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 we can't get parts for it. And Tracy and Sean are pushing hard to purchase this spin doctor, and I'll make the motion tonight that we purchase it.
I'll second that.
Now, we did, before, let's go into discussion, because I got something. Do we have to bid this, Mr. Nester, since it's approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars?
I would say yes.
Yep.
But I think they're the only company that makes this.
Still has to go up the bid, it's up to twenty-five thousand.
I think they changed that a year ago, July, to be fifty thousand.
In an emergency, I thought.
An emergency, I don't think there's a limit. A professional, there's no limit.
I think you're correct.
I think it's fifty.
Well, if there's only one company, I'd say it wouldn't take very long to bid, would it?
Well, it'll take a couple of months.
Huh?
You gotta have notices in the paper.
You're gonna have to, is that right, Kirk?
I believe so.
So, that's one month, I mean, why not do stuff legally? I don't know, ask your attorney.
You wanna just bid it? I think, I think we're legal to spend up to thirty thousand for that bid. But we won't, but we won't buy it if it isn't legal. Are you looking this up, Earl?
Yep, yep. All contracts for construction of public improvement which involve the expenditures of fifty thousand dollars and any other contracts for purchase of supplies or services which involves the expenditures of twenty-five thousand dollars... which involves the expenditures of twenty-five thousand dollars, must be advertised for bids.
So where's equipment there?
The bid limit for the purchase of supplies or services for any municipality, any municipal utility, is also twenty-five thousand dollars.
So if the utility is twenty-five?
Now, for supplies, so it's a question of whether that's considered a supply or is that an improvement?
I'll make my motion if we go up the bid.
Second.
Okay, the motion will change from purchase to go up to bid.
Correct.
Got a motion and second to go up to bid for a Spin Doctor? Any more discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Posed no? And the asphalt zipper?
Another public works issue. We had, and we've been talking about this zipper for a long time. It's a milling machine that can go into the alleyways and mill up the old asphalt and put a new surface on it. And we've actually had people in our public works meeting this last meeting complaining of the alleys, how rough they are. And Billy's been pushing us hard to get it. And it's my recommendation to go up for bid to purchase an asphalt zipper.
Is that a motion then?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion to go up to bid on the asphalt zipper?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Discussion?
Uh, and one of the things I might add is the budget for the street department's equipment this year is only twenty-five thousand bucks. And this machine will be split between three departments, between water, sewer, and streets, because they'll use it, all three departments. But the streets will pay the majority of it. The recommendation of the committee was to finance this over five years to keep this within budget.
And what's the total? Okay, what's the total approximate cost?
A hundred and twenty-three thousand, I believe.
How come we wouldn't wait and maybe wait for budget time and see what we got left?
'Cause our alleys need repairs now.
All they've needed is repaired for, ever since I've lived here. But I mean, you know, I remember the last couple of years we've been fighting over this streets sweep. So...
It's another one coming down the pipe.
See, where's that gonna put that?
On budget for it this next year? Or get by with our old ones or nothing yet?
You know, I'm not opposed to this asphalt zipper. It just, it's, it's a hard sell for me before we do budget in a couple of months. I just, I think that's something you, you wait and you check your budget and make sure you're having enough money for it. 'Cause I mean, you're right, we're spending a lot of money on lots of projects.
Our sewer zipper was in the budget last year and was cut. Well, actually, all the street...
We didn't have all the money there.
All, all the equipment was cut out of the street department budget last year. The request for major...
But we didn't have no hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget last year for that zipper.
But there is twenty-five thousand in there. I don't know if any of that's been spent.
We had to buy a new motor.
It's the way we could get the machines, start getting the cars fixed and...
We had to buy a new diesel motor. I'm sure that's at its back few dollars.
I don't know if that's under equipment or repairs or how that's in the budget.
Well, my thing is, you know, we, we've, we've thought over this for three years on these alleys. We, for some reason, we can't even buy gravel and put in there. So I guess I'm really, I'm perplexed that if we buy this thing that we're gonna have the best alleys in town. I mean, I just, supposedly, I guess. You know, and then there's other companies. And I've, I've given you the information, Harley. They will come in and they will mill up alleys. They'll mill up streets. They charge an hourly rate, a daily rate or a weekly rate, whatever you wanna pay or whatever you wanna budget to them.
They, they had minimum requirements of how many streets you wanted to do or how many feet of the street that you wanted to do?
Or alley.
Or alleys?
Well, yeah, and they told me...
The alleys were a problem, 'cause they couldn't get through the alleys with the milling machine.
They never told me that. And I've talked to both companies that do it.
Did you give them the twelve-foot width that they're talking about?
They do highways every day. They make multiple passes, I mean...
Oh, I know. The, the high elevation of the alleys and the power lines, that sort of thing.
More discussion? I've got a motion and second to go up to bids on the zipper. Are you ready to vote? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Posed no?
No.
The nos are Carl? I didn't hear. Two nos? Okay, two nos and Wes, sorry. Motion passed, we will go up to bid. Uh, part of the DOT requirements for parades is that we give them all approved in advance. But we can approve all of the parades at one time at one meeting and halfway it's in our minutes. So if somebody doesn't apply till the last minute, we don't have to hold up with not getting it approved. So I'd like you to approve the parades for the man's days, Fourth of July, the traveling wall, the homecoming and the parade lights. Some of...
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion or questions?
Is it my understanding that they gotta come up with somebody to police the streets?
It's, it's on the form that way.
Our reserves are good.
We don't have enough reserves to do it now.
Hold on.
We've got a couple. The form says that they're responsible for policing. And what we've done on the past couple of parades is all of them are responsible. They've asked the city to do it and we've done it. I'm supposed to be finding out after meeting on the sixth, which is tomorrow, if we've got some other people that will actually be doing the policing for us of all the parades. And I hope that works. And we can save the police from doing that. More discussion? Got a motion and second to approve the parades for this year. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Posed no? And we've got two change orders for Hills Materials and Saltland Contractors. They're both the same. It would extend the contract period by fourteen days, which would go till May fifteenth completion date. So I entertain a motion on the change order for Hills Materials.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the change order extending the completion date till May fifteenth for Hills. Discussion or questions? So then they'll be in the penalty phase, correct? I'm sorry? They'll be, supposedly, they'll be in the penalty, penalty phase if they're not done at this time.
Right, after the fifteen.
Unless there's a lot more weather and that's the reason... Oh, come on! Yes, they will be in the penalty phase unless there's other weather issues. And that's why we've moved it to the fifteenth. More discussion or questions? Got a motion to approve the change order for Hills Materials. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Posed no?
No.
And the same change order for Simon, looking on the intersections. I entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion or questions? Got a motion and second to approve. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Posed no? And plenty reports, administration. Carl, did you have anything?
No, we didn't. We have a meeting a week from fourth Monday.
Okay? Other quarters, right? Did you have anything else?
Oh, yeah, we had a big agenda here. Citywide cleanup fifteen loads with the big side dump went to Edgemont. And according to Billy, it was very successful. Looked like a lot of people cleaned junk out of their yards. Got a lot of bigger items in. Total of a hundred and nine pickup loads. The, talked about the alley behind Black Hill Special Services. Talked with a little bit about Southern Hills water users possibly selling water to these guys. Spin Doctor, zipper, project updates. Class four operator, brought that. Cranes issues. Drawn a blank on the name of the street. Nickery, okay, thanks. And then we also had a presentation from Verizon, who is working with Transparent Technologies, who are doing water meters now. And they'll network these things to where we can just look on the computer to see and monitor the water meters of every house to see if there are excess water usage or possibly detect leaks earlier than... It was pretty intriguing. I think it's something the city should look at a little closer to. It's basically, you could sit at a computer in the city hall and pull up any water meter down. You wanted to look at it, look, look at what its usage has been.
It's just gonna run through the fiber optics?
It'll be on the Verizon network. So it'd be so-called technology, I guess.
What'd they say, it's two hundred and something dollars per meter for ten years?
It's three hundred and fifty bucks per meter. And that's with a ten-year contract to be on the network. And we can retrofit our meters that are good now with this technology. That's one of the questions I didn't ask, is how much that would be. That three fifty was for a meter and to be on the network for ten years.
Who pays for that?
And come out of the water. But we were also talking, you know, we had these other guys wanting to change all our water meters and all that. We don't need to do that, I don't believe. This is something that should be looked at, I think. We don't investigate it more and see if, and, uh, they'll do a test run for us, too, if we wanted to try that. And they emailed me a lot of customers that are using this system here in South Dakota now, so we could check with the customers, see if they like the service or not.
Rides on this netting out, aren't they?
Well, the, the other name, the company that does the meters is Transparent Technologies. But it runs over the Verizon network.
Uh, I have a question regarding the, the ones that we're putting in now. Have we had any results on the ones that we put in as a test as yet?
They did. That Johnson Control thing, yes. They tested that and they come back with, I believe that we're losing fifteen percent accuracy on the, the majority of the meters they tested. And does that sound right to everybody? I can't draw all these facts out of my head all the time.
It actually, there was a range. It actually ranged something. The newer meters that we've just rebuilt were around ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. Some of the older ones were sixty percent. So we're looking at Dwight's about right, and that's an average probably of...
Fifteen percent loss.
Fifteen percent loss over them, out of that eighty meters.
So the, the point I'm trying to get to is, these new meters that we're testing now, where are they made? Do we know? Did Johnson Control tell us?
There's census?
There's, there's census meters there.
Census.
There's census meters. I don't know exactly where they're physically made, no. But they're, they're all over the United States. I've been involved with two or three different, different water systems.
Well, I'm looking at, what I'm looking at is made in the USA. And this Verizon thing, I think, is gonna come from China.
I think they might've said Germany. Where this transparent technology...
No, I think we need, should look and see where these are that, that Johnson Control is, is trying to put in for us or they're verifying the use of it to get us our money back. Where is there made, too?
That's not a change, Carl. That's, we've been using that type of meter for ever and ever and ever. I don't know whether they're made in the United States or came into that point before. Yeah.
That's what I'd like to find out.
But it is the type of meter that we've been using for years and years. In fact, is even the, you can correct me, Ray, but wasn't the old, didn't the old Neptune meters turn into census meters somewhere along the line?
Yes.
The very original meters that we put in. That company's no longer around. But they did transfer into the census-type meter, which is the one we're using now. No, yours is probably no better.
Well, I just, you know, I don't recall what these new meters are gonna cost if we so desire Johnson Control to put them in.
They were, the Cadillac package, they were pushing seven, eight hundred bucks a meter.
I don't think we want, I think we wanted to stick with a Ford.
And it was kinda decided from many that this city crews could change meters.
Uh, they're all water systems right now. The Mini Choney in Mid-Dakota. And they're using the satellite reed meter nowadays. That's the newest technology. And the last numbers I've seen on them issues was like five hundred dollars a meter. Oh, that was the initial cost. That was just the initial cost. But then you, it was automatic reed from satellite.
Basically, that's through Verizon, isn't it?
I think this is, the Verizon deal is kinda the same deal. And they talked about the Mini Cota or whatever they call it.
The Mini Choney.
They talked about that they got some of these on their projects.
Bet you, they're good. It's, it's great technology.
Well, they'll, they can even, it'll even alert you if they got a meter freezing up. That'll, on the computer screen, it'll, it's just all done through the, through the network.
How much of the meter did they have to change?
Huh?
How much of the initial meter did they have to change? The whole thing?
No, just the head.
Thanks, Lee. Don't look safe, Greg, did you?
We did not. We will have one next week. I guess around Monday at nine o'clock.
All right. Closer wreck, Wes?
No, we did not. We'll have one the following day, about three o'clock.
All right. I got two, three things. The, uh, the VA, the Save the VA, Bob, I might have to have a little help. I looked for that press release from Representative Noem and I couldn't find it. But last week, she had introduced legislation that passed the House saying that the VA could not use any dollars to pay for an environmental impact statement if it would end up closing a historic property like the Hot Springs VA is basically what it said. And the VA, Save the VA Committee has been looking at getting information for the environmental impact statement, thinking it would be done. There's a question now whether or not it will still be done, because the funds may apply to fifteen budgets instead of the twenty-fourteen budget. So if it's still in place, of course, we'll need information for the environmental impact statement. Am I right so far, Bob, in what I've said? What have I left out?
You're correct. The point to stress is that Representative Noem's amendment is for fiscal year 2015, which begins October first of this year. My opinion only. When Secretary Shinsek announced that he was going to do an environmental impact study, he did that in January. I have to believe he had full understanding that the money would need to come out of 2014. So my expectation is he has the money or expects to get the money if he wants to proceed with the environmental impact study. I believe what Secretary, Representative Noem is trying to demonstrate is that they're not going away. They're well aware of this issue and they're gonna do everything they can to try and block him from closing the facility. Again, I stress, that's my opinion only. So what Save the VA is telling everybody is that we can't stop simply because this potential amendment is out there. It still hasn't made it through the Senate. The president hasn't signed it. So we have to continue as though the environmental impact study is going to begin tomorrow. So we have to continue as though the environmental impact study is going to begin tomorrow. I think it's the opportunity that the citizens deserve to, to make their own individual statements about how they feel about this. So I would encourage everybody to keep going, just as though that amendment was never proposed, and if it works, great. If it doesn't, we still need to be prepared. We can't lose the time hoping that something else will, will happen, of course.
Well, isn't there a way to go on there, the online and find their budget and see what's, what's in there for EISs?
I would expect that, at the time the budget was made, he didn't know that he was gonna do an environmental impact study, so he would've projected the costs that he knew were, were coming up. Yes, you can go online and look at every, or any federal agency's budget, but my suspicion is, is that we won't find anything that he didn't expect to be doing.
It's kind of a data all other line, most likely, we're covering all that.
Well, in fact, it was the two thousand and fourteen budget where Senator Johnson called him on the carpet for wanting to get lease money for Rapid City.
Right.
So, at that time, there was no discussion about an EIS, I can't imagine repeating any budget about that.
Thanks, Bob. Anyway, what, what I'm interested in is, is how this would affect the city government. So if you've got ideas or something that would affect the city government, be thinking about that, or, or give them to me and I'll start putting together, I'll put some notes together, because if they go ahead with the EIS, it would be good for the city of Hot Springs to have some statements in there, this is what it will do to the city government. So if anything you have, let me know, I'll just collect the thoughts.
Just to add on what you said, two years ago, when I made my first presentation with council about the potential for the VA posing, I think the figure I used when we looked at the number of employees that would be left after the, the Secretary's, after Black Hill's proposal, they were talking about going from three hundred and sixty-six employees down to seventy employees, and those seventy employees would be the outpatient clinic and the dialysis unit that they were gonna leave in Hot Springs. So just looking at those figures in, that had late two thousand and eleven, maybe very early two thousand and twelve, it was a potential salary hit of fifteen million dollars. Figure out what that's gonna do to your city budget.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Another item, the, I've got some paperwork I got late from, well, actually, I got it this morning from Carol. Pat Gibbs bought, sent some information on the easement, on the, behind the Hotwood pump station, getting through with the city property and on the other property. Carol said that she wasn't, she's thought some, some things in there probably should be changed, but she didn't want to spend a lot of time on it unless the council wanted to go ahead and proceed with that easement, so I'm guessing that at this point, we want to proceed, get an easement both ways, so we can cross their land and they can cross the city land.
I'd like to see what Carol last said first.
Well, in, in order, maybe I should have her look at it first and then decide.
That property's going up production real fast, so...
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
Wouldn't that have to be an agenda item?
I'm not looking for motion to spend money, I'm looking for a consensus of whether or not we should have Carol look at the, look at the lease agreement that we got late Friday. It would be an agenda item in order to look at that, yes, we're not approving that now. But she said if the council would've wanted it in the future, I don't want to spend several hours looking at it, build the city if the, if the council didn't want it. So I'm looking for like a consensus, and I'm sort of hearing we ought to have her look at it and see what it says.
I agree.
I, I, I think I'll probably go along with the easement, but I'd like to see what she has to say about it first.
Okay. I'll tell Carol to proceed, or let's come to the next meeting. And the last I might have is, you might have known this, on the middle of April, we've got the lawsuit that settled between Pete Lean and Crowell, and the defendant, which is the city of Hot Springs, may go ahead and lease the property as we discussed, and it follows Chapter Nine in the state law.
Per approval from the FAA.
The court doesn't talk about FAA, just talks about the lease, but there are other stipulations that also have to be agreed, right? And that's all I had. We've got to move into executive session on personnel matter. Motion's going to executive session. Motion, a second, going to executive session.
And a ten-minute break.
Personnel, after an eight-minute break.